Ready. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The regular council meeting tonight, 6:00 PM. Please turn off your cell phones. Let's have a moment of silence and then we'll stand for the pledge. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes, Reed, Brown.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Brown. I'd like to make some adjustments to the agenda. The first would be that in closed session, we are, we're supposed to press an evaluation of our city manager, look at the data that, that has been collected by city council members, review of our city manager. None of us have seen that, and so I'd like to table that until we have received that data. Secondly, I'd like to, been hearing that we need to remove request approval of agreements, I believe it was the POAM.
Yes.
To, that, those negotiations are ongoing, so I'd like to remove that also from the agenda as well. And finally, because we still have not yet seen the, the most recent draft of council rules or procedure, I'd like to table that as well until we get that out to everybody.
Thank you. So there's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none? Do we have a motion to go into closed session to, for a strategy in negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement when either negotiating, negotiating party requests a closed hearing?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call for closed session, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Okay, so we will convene downstairs in the mayor's conference room for closed session.
Good evening. We're going to reconvene. We'll reconvene with a roll call.
Councilmember Barnes, Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer, French.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here. We will skip to item six. Mayor, councilmember comments. Are there any council comments this evening?
Maybe you should explain to why we're not doing the top part.
Okay, so, thank you, councilmember Reed. Councilmember Reed was just suggesting that I explain the difference in this evening's meeting. We had a closed session in the mid, in the middle of the meeting towards the beginning, so items one through five were carried out earlier. Sometimes we have executive sessions or closed sessions after the meeting, but this evening we had it kind of, the meeting started earlier and it was included in the agenda, so. Seeing no councilmember comments, we'll move on to presentations. Item A under Presentations, Peabody Project, Bruce Johnston.
Thank you, everyone. Less of a presentation and more of an announcement and some goodwill. The Peabody Project is formally approved through the state of Michigan. You will soon see windows opening and light going into the Peabody Building at 400 South Superior for the first time in many, many, many years. Everyone is very excited. It's been on the team in no small part thanks to your city manager Cheryl and your EDC director Amy and the whole Peabody team with Bill and Karen and all the people that did work together. The state of Michigan certainly played a leading role in supporting what is happening in Albion and at the Peabody specific. We believe in about nine months, that corner building that has stood for so long since the 1850s will be, be back to the level of renovation that it was many, many years ago and will stay that way for a long, long time. So rather than a presentation, we just wanted to make sure that you all knew that it had happened and where the, the long process is on its way to dropping a hammer before you know it.
Councilmember French.
So, thank you, Bruce. Your work also probably should be lauded as well because I know you've been a critical part of the project. Will you start your work demolition and otherwise after the road is completed or simultaneous to the road being completed? I know they're laying bricks in your direction and so.
Right. Well, we'll certainly do nothing that will get in the way of that, but my belief is that the general contractor and the workers that they have involved will get started sooner than later.
Okay.
Coming in through the back or around the back or back through the alleyway or the old parking lot and through that area to be able to get inside. Interior demolition, abatement of asbestos, lead and, lead repaint removal and so forth. I mean, the process, want to get it down to its shell is, is quite.
Yeah.
A lot of work to begin with.
Yeah, sure, sure. I'm just trying to get an idea of when you'd actually be starting, so.
I believe we're starting rather quickly. Bill, you want to say a few things?
We're always hopeful. I, I've learned a total new level of patience with this project, seeing that we've been working on it almost a year. So we, we've, are in the process of completing construction documents with Graham Construction for, is a company that's doing the hotel. They'll be moving to the Peabody. Availability of labor and all that will have some, dictate some our timeline there. Certainly, we're anxious to get it going as soon as we can. There's some things that we'd like to see done before winter and so how that exactly is going to flow, we're not absolutely sure yet. To reiterate, reiterate a little bit of what Bruce said, I, I want to, I want to thank the mayor, the council, the city manager for their continued support, going back to last year when we presented this project to you, explained it, you worked with us and we, now it's up to us to deliver a high-level project that everybody in Albion can be proud of as it will be a mutual investment for many stakeholders in the city. I, I believe also that October 20th.
20th.
October 20th, there'll be a ribbon-cutting ceremony. The MEDC will be present. My, my, in my honest opinion, it's, it's probably less about the Peabody Project and more about, you know, another opportunity for Albion to, to show the state what's happening here, the aggressive stance we've taken towards revitalization of the downtown, all this, all the, the stakeholders that have been involved in this project. And also the, you know, that, that this won't end with the hotel, it won't end with the Peabody, it won't end until we're, we have a downtown that we all are very proud of and that will be fit for us for the next hundred years and will be fit for all citizens of, of the community of Albion.
Thank you, Bill.
Couple more things, I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that we're following through on, as we promised earlier on, the Albion Housing Commission. I met with them last week. They will be involved in some of the work going on at the project. There will be, there has been and will be more contractor recruitment of local contractors to give them opportunities to make sure that they bid on the project. But that's all been underway for the last few weeks since we knew that MEDC was close and had agreed on the terms. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move forward to item B under Presentations, MDOT 2017 Youth Development and Mentoring Program. Brian Wooden, I hope I said that right, and, and Harry Bonner.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Dr. Mitchell. Good to see you. I'm here tonight. My name is Brian Wooden. I'm with Michigan Department of Transportation, Southwest Region, and I am the Youth Development and Mentoring Program Coordinator for our region.
Let's have a preparation.
Yeah.
I think it's F5.
Oh, he's not using that kind of thing I'm using.
Yes, it was.
F5. Ah! Try to duplicate it so we can stand. I lost.
Is the HMI court connected? Excellent. All right. Thank you. All right. And I'm here to give a quick overview of our 2017 program, of which we had quite a few young people from the Albion and Marshall areas involved. The YDMP program, it's kind of existed around the state of Michigan for quite a number of years now. It's our second full year in the Southwest Region, which encompasses Marion Branch, Calhoun County, Kalamazoo, St. Joe and Van Buren Counties. We also have Michigan Works, Conexus runs a similar program to us via contract over in the Benton Harbor area. So YDMP, it's a 10-week summer job and one of the hallmarks of it is we incorporate mentoring activities, which I'll show you all some of the ones we did this year. We had 16 total participants in 2016, which was the first year back after quite a few years. And then this year, we had actually grew to 41 people. So kind of what we do is we work on rest areas, carpool lots, MDOT facilities. There's eight rest areas, 16 carpool lots. In our region, there's about 1,700 miles worth of M-road and I'm pretty sure we drove over all of them and we drove over 44,000 miles this summer safely completing projects. And I like to say that's almost driving coast-to-coast almost 14 times. Now, the mentoring activities are the big component that I'd like to talk about and there's just a kind of a rundown list of, of what we did, but I also have kind of like action shots here. For the first week where we had team leaders and team members involved, we give them their first aid CPR certification. We do safety training, being out on the roads, being aware around traffic, things like that in the work zones. And then also plants to watch out for, especially poison ivy, poison sumac, things like that and invasive species. And we have a system where we report any invasive species, especially plants, to our MDOT biologists and they take care of that for us. We made a visit to the state Capitol. We toured the actual Capitol building as well as the Supreme Court. They have a learning center there where we were able to have kind of a mock trial and they spoke about the components of the justice system and things like that. Western Michigan University, we went to both the main campus and the aviation campus in Battle Creek, so that's a picture from their control tower. MDOT sponsored a college and career expo at Washtenaw Community College and we actually had four different MDOT regions involved with that. So we got to talk to college recruiters, military, private industry was there. We had guest speakers talking about resume building skills and they kind of little game that went along with college life, where you got to learn what it's like to be, you know, managing your money and managing your time when you're off at school. MDOT Fuel Services in Lansing, it's our statewide bureau where we do a lot of work with connected and autonomous vehicles and smart traffic systems. So we got to see a lot of technology involved in that. They also do testing services, so they test concrete, asphalt, rebar and things like that, so we got to see some of that in action, which is pretty fascinating. And we also went over to the Kalamazoo Institute of Art and had Docents Lee Tours of the Art Institute, which I thought was, was very interesting. We actually had Warden Sherman Campbell from Michigan Department of Corrections. He's a warden of a facility in Adrian. He came and spoke to our group and the Benton Harbor group this year. He kind of talked about his upbringing in Flint, single-parent household. He was going to be a ball player in college, kind of got injured and he ended up getting a job with Department of Corrections. He's been there for 23 years. He started off as a officer and worked his way up to, to a warden. So pretty inspiring for the young people. We visited U of M, the Transportation Research Institute and M City in Ann Arbor. And again, we're talking about connected vehicles, autonomous vehicles and how the cars talk to each other, how they talk to the roads. We got to see, MDOT partnered with U of M to build a small city where they, where companies can test their vehicles in real worlds, real-world situations. And that's the Navia bus. It's actually a driverless vehicle that they are running on campus this semester. They just started this semester. So it's kind of disconcerting. You get on the bus and there's no steering wheel, there's no driver, just seats and you sit there and it kind of knows where to go. It's pretty fascinating. They have a sled lab, we got to see that. They actually ran the sled test for seat belts and things like that. And one of my team leaders, Mr. Crumb, he sat at the control panel and pretended like he was going to press the button to launch it. But it wasn't just about the mentoring activities we did, you know, it wasn't just fun and games, so we did hard work. One of the big things is, as you can see between the left and the right, the before and after, the field work out there, making sure signs are visible and unobstructed. Guardrails are a big part of what we do as well, making sure they're in good repair, visible. There's a roundabout up on M43, so we took care of the landscaping there. Now, one of the, we did a couple of projects this year that kind of straddled between work and mentoring, so we were actually, we have a partner with Habitat for Humanity in Kalamazoo, where we worked in their garden and we also worked at one of their houses and we actually had to tear up that concrete sidewalk, just using manual labor. That was pretty intense. Our, MDOT facilities are one of our region cruise garage. We cleaned some, cleared away some tree branches, so you could see the signage. We partnered with Calhoun County Parks Department and we worked out the biological preserve. We helped clean up some of the boardwalks, repair some of the broken pieces of the boardwalk. They had a long wall, the stone wall and then the other, other wall too. So again, kind of clearing that out to make it look nice. Carpool lots are one of our, one of our big activities as well, so we go in there and pick up the trash and we actually had the Public Media Network of Kalamazoo come out and do a small segment on, on the work we were doing around the, around the county. City of Battle Creek, we partnered with them to do outfall inspections where they trained our young people how to use a, an iPad and a GIS application to where they'd go out to the sites, they would do an inventory of the site, inspect it and make notes and would directly go to the iPad and it would go right back to the computers at, at the Public Works Department. So last year, our theme was kind of building bridges for the future and I think this year was more about growing by helping others. You know, some of the benefits of our program, of course, is the work experience, good paycheck, good job, personal growth opportunities, but, but again, I really like to focus on the, on the helping others with Habitat for Humanity, working with Safe Place Domestic Violence Shelter in Battle Creek to do projects that have more of a community impact, a smaller community impact. As far as 2018, we're looking for about 45 participants again, keep the program about the same size. Yeah, and I look forward, Mr. Bonner was very instrumental in helping us connect with, with young people who are interested in this opportunity and hopefully as we move into 2018, get more folks involved with the program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council?
Sounds like grateful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
So that's 45 individuals across that region.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Yeah, so we had a lot of, the bulk of our participants were from Kalamazoo and Battle Creek this year. But again, we had a team in Marshall and a team here in Albion based out of the Road Department Garage. So we had probably seven or eight young people from the Marshall, Albion, kind of all of that area as well.
Okay. And can you describe, I guess briefly, just the application process, like how they're selected?
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah. Yeah, it, it's, it's all online and so we'll open it up in probably March or April. And young people can go online to the state of Michigan website and you set up a profile and then you just answer a few questions, you apply for the job, answer a few questions. We do require a 2.5 GPA and then a letter of recommendation as well from just about anybody, usually a teacher, pastor, community leader, things like that. And then we do have an interview process. We bring them in and send them down, try to go easy. I know a lot of the young people, it's their first, first job interview, first job experience. So, yeah.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. What's the age range?
Minimum 16. You know, our target, targeting 16 to 24, but we have older people as well. We had Mr. Crumb, who works in the Marshall Schools, come in as a team leader. And then my facilitator, kind of my right-hand man, he retired from the Navy about three or four years ago and he was looking for a job over the summer. He didn't like being retired, just sitting around doing nothing. And so we can have, so I think it's great for, again, for people who are working in the school system, looking for maybe a summer job or thinking still continue to have a positive impact on, on young people and even I think retired people are a great, a great thing too. So, so at least 16, but I don't like to put a cap on, on the top, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time.
We'll move forward to public comment. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum and this is limited to agenda items only and please state your name and address. Are there any, is there any public comment this evening on the agenda?
Dennis Tomlin, 313 Irwin Avenue. Not really a comment, more just a question. If you look online at the council procedures and decorum, it states that with the, the time limit says five minutes, I was wondering why it's reduced to three minutes in here? Just looking to get an elaboration on that, so.
Yeah, we. Councilmember French, I'd like you to.
Thank you. So we're in the process of drafting new council rules. And so what we thought we would do this fall is try out the three-minute trial, but we've never cut anybody off. And we're kind of keeping track of how long people speak about agenda items and a public comment at the end, just to get some data about what it is. So we set that three-minute line in our written agendas and then we're just looking to see how long people are speaking. And what we found so far is in fact, very few people go past three minutes. So in an effort to sort of expedite the meeting length and time, we'd say three minutes. We also found that, has been recommended by a consultant who came and worked with us on council rules, wow, back in February. January of, of this year, that after about three minutes, people start repeating what they're saying. And so it just becomes kind of a waste of time. They get their point, the point they want to make to council gets done in the first two minutes, wrap up in the third and, and then they start doing it again. And so if we set the limit at three, it, it asks our speakers to be concise and to come prepared to a meeting to make those comments so that we can expedite the meeting length.
And, and I'll just chime in and say the, the point of public comment really is not necessarily for council or the manager, the attorney or city staff to answer questions per se, is to make, is to make us aware of something that we may not know if it hasn't been brung to us before and if it has before the meeting, it makes the public aware that we're being aware. And so then after that, we can respond, once we were able to check back and follow up on the, the concerns that are raised. So it's really a chance just for the public to make us aware of issues that then we can follow up on, so. Thank you. Are there any other?
Yeah, Brian, 213 West Erie Street. For those of us that aren't familiar with the project, the Peabody Project, what building or buildings actually are we talking about?
Is Bruce still here? No, okay. Okay. This is basically the old Lot and Slaughter and Lipsy Building on the corner of East Erie and South Superior Street. It's the brick building at that intersection, the southwest intersection, corner of the intersection.
Opposite parks.
Yeah. Bingo. Are there any other public comments this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we will move forward to the consent calendar. Basically consists of approval of session minutes. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Items for individual discussion, item A, request, request approval, first reading of ordinance number 2017 dash 07, an ordinance to amend, ordinance 58 dash 226, minor in possession of alcohol. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved in second. The city attorney would like to?
Sure. So basically, this is coming to council because there's been, normally I would say a change in state law, but actually it's been about three changes to state law. Basically, what happened is the legislature passed Public Act 357 of 2016 and effectively what it did is it, it modified the state statute regarding minor possession of alcohol such that a first offense will no longer be a criminal offense. First offense is a civil infraction punishable by $100. A second offense becomes a misdemeanor that carries with it the potential for incarceration. A, a third offense likewise carries with it the potential for incarceration, it's an increasing penalty. The interesting thing that has changed in the state law is that first offenses are no longer just minor possession of alcohol offenses. First offenses can be other violations of the motor vehicle, excuse me, of the Michigan Liquor Control Code, certain alcohol-related sections of the motor vehicle code like open intoxicants, operating while intoxicated, things like that, operating a boat while intoxicated and certain, of the certain sections of the, of the penal code. So those will all count as prior judgments for purposes of establishing second and third offenses. Initially, when we drafted this and submitted it to council, we drafted it with an effective date of November 16th of 2017. What I requested council to do tonight, I was just advised, the legislature has once again made a third amendment to this such that initially, the first effective date was January 1 of 18 and amendment was passed making it October 10 of 17. They are now, have passed through both sides of the House and the governor's expected to sign it this week. It's now again going to be January 1 of 18. So I'm just requesting that the only change we make tonight is that the effective date be January 1 of 18 and then the rest of the ordinance essentially mirrors the state statute.
Is there a motion to amend? Councilmember French.
Code move, we make the date changes recommended by our city attorney.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved in second. We'll have a roll call vote for that amendment.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Is there any further discussion from council on the amended ordinance?
I'd just like to say.
Councilmember Reed.
If, if it's not going to be a, is it?
No, it's a misdemeanor.
If it's not going to be a misdemeanor, are, are they at least going to be asked to take some type of class to maybe prohibit that from happening again?
Yes, the way that the statute is directed is that for any offense, they can be issued, they can be ordered by the court to take substance abuse assessments in counseling.
Seeing no other, seeing no further discussion, I'll ask a roll call vote to approve the amended ordinance.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item B, request approval, first reading, first reading ordinance number 2017 dash 08, an ordinance to add sections, I guess the various sections there. And I, is that something you want to?
Sure.
Oh, is it, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to, to do that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second.
So this was an ordinance that I, I put together with our chief of public safety. Essentially what it does, as the council's aware, the city currently issues municipal parking citations throughout the city for, for various things. The problem with municipal parking citations is a lot of citizens are kind of thumbing their nose at those. They will accrue several hundred dollars for the parking citations and they go unpaid. We have not as of yet had a towing or what I'll call a, a mobilization ordinance. Several municipalities do, City of Grand Rapids, City of Detroit, Washington. So this is very much similar to that of Grand Rapids and basically what it says is if an individual has six or more unpaid civil infraction tickets or parking violations issued by the city, the city can tow their vehicle or immobilize it, which means putting a boot on it and until those tickets are paid and the individual is responsible for the towing fees, storage fees, immobilization fees, things of that nature.
Councilmember French.
So I've been asked from some folks in my precinct and some folks I've spoken to in town about this ordinance. One of the things that, that I worry about this ordinance is that while, yes, this One of the things that, that I worry about this ordinance is that while, yes, the citizen has committed an infraction and should pay their fine, if they are a family of poverty, by taking away your veh, that vehicle, you are now limiting their ability to pay that fee if they rely on that vehicle to get to work. So, I, I, I worry that, that us enacting this ordinance would then further limit our ability to collect on these, these infractions, because it may be that, that the individual for whom these fines have been levied has no way of paying, and that rather than taking advantage of a system by not paying, it may be that they are in a position where they just can't afford to pay. And so while I know six infractions is a big, nice, high number, I just wanted the record to show that that is a concern that has been raised.
Well, there is an opportunity for the individual to contest the citations, but I guess what I want to point out to council is that this only is effective after six violations.
Right. So, so what hap, so what happens, if, if I'm correct, I think the first, if you, if you park on the street after, let's say, was it one or two?
Three days.
Yeah, so you, the, the ticket's like, I think, about fifteen dollars? Okay?
Very inexpensive.
Yeah, and so then if you don't pay it within five days, it jumps to thirty. So, I guess my question is, what, like, okay, let's say you don't pay that, it jumps to thirty. Does it keep?
No.
Okay, so basically it just stays at thirty forever?
Correct. And our, our only recourse in the past has been that we can write traffic citations for these tickets?
Okay.
In which then it goes to court, and then the court has to decide whether or not the person violated the ordinance that was there.
Okay.
And that's a, a longer process, that we usually end up paying officers overtime to go to court.
Okay.
And then the court gets a share of that fee at that point, and we end up getting a lot less than we got to begin with, and it is a huge waste of time for us as far as it comes to collecting fines.
Okay.
So, it actually costs us more to collect fines that way than it does to actually write the ticket.
Councilmember Brown, councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, has this proven to be effective in other communities? I mean, doing this, has this really increased the amount of tickets?
The majority of these tickets that I see this being enforced on is the two-to-six parking at the college, and those tickets are difficult for us to collect on, because most of those people don't live in the community, and sometimes we can't even identify the owner of those vehicles, because they belong to a family or corporation, and so we can't even identify the owner of the vehicle, which makes it difficult to write a citation to the owner of the vehicle and get them to come to court to do anything with it. This way, we can actually take the vehicle, and they can't get it back until they pay the fines.
Well, if it's at the college, is there ample parking?
Councilmember Reed. Sorry, I'm sorry. I should want to, it's?
I will cede my spot.
Okay, so, councilmember Reed, councilmember French.
Okay. I was just saying, if, if you say at, at the college, is there ample parking spaces there for them to park off of the streets, so that they don't have to be out?
As a private entity, that would be their responsibility to provide that for those people, and if they don't provide it, the parking as required, we have ordinances that we have to enforce in the city as far as parking on the street, so. Unless the council wants to change the ordinance that allows them to park on the street, I have to enforce the ordinance as is.
Councilmember French.
I would disagree with any motion to change the ordinance for parking, knowing how hard our street workers work to try to get snow off our streets. So, no, I, I, I'm, I'm happy that we're having this conversation, but it sounds like from the evidence you're talking to me about, the individuals for whom the supplies are not necessarily the people in our poorest section of town, but are more likely connected to the college.
Correct.
Thank you.
You know, I, I, one thing I will say, I'll, I'll agree with councilmember French, is that, you know, when I was walking, I was doing the campaign, I went down Bidwell. I know there were some residents who were...
That's one of the biggest complaints I get is that street. And we write a lot of tickets on the street, but again, the college students either choose not to pay them, or they don't have a problem paying them, and they see it as a parking fee for the night, basically, so.
Okay. Is, is there a way to work with campus safety on that?
Not really, because they have no jurisdiction on the streets.
Or, or at least in terms of, because my understanding is that you have to have the sticker if you have your car.
They are supposed to have the sticker, but they're also supposed to not park on the street overnight, so they don't all have identification. And we can run the place and find out who they belong to, but like I said, if it belongs to a company, it's difficult to write a citation to a company, and then to actually collect on it. It's very time consuming.
And then the la, the last question I have is, so, like, I guesstimate, like, how, how many instances are there in which someone does reach six?
Uh, so, many.
Okay.
My guess, though, is with the teeth that this puts into the ordinance, that would change, because once they realize that their car is going to be taken away, they'll make other arrangements for it not to be on the street.
And, 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 and I would assume, I said one question, this is the last question, I, I assume that most of those are that two-to-six thing. It's not like someone parking in a handicap or something like that, okay. Attorney Harkness.
Just what I was going to stress to council is that, you know, this, 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 the way that the ordinance is drafted is specifically intended for those that are what I would refer to as recidivist offenders, that has to, you have to have it happen six times before we actually either mobilize or tow the vehicle. And in speaking with the city attorneys from the municipal, some of the municipalities I mentioned, they said it's been very effective at curtailing that type of behavior. And it was, they said it was amazing how fast no one was parking on those particular streets where this, this was enforced, and fines were paid immediately.
You know, I will, I will say, the question I have is, just making sure that we're going to enforce it throughout the whole city, because I know that there's improvements along...
And, and the officers do write tickets throughout the city, especially the two-to-six parking.
Yeah.
And I've encouraged that they enforce it evenly across the city as they see fit. But again, at the college, they can write upwards of two hundred tickets in a night, and they have four hours to do that, and it can take all four of those hours to get that done, so.
Okay. And then the, the other question I have, and this is probably for, you know, those kind of very rare cases, do we still have the option for, I'm, I'm, probably this is more for residents, permanent residents exemptions to that, if there's some kind of...
Yes, they can always call dispatch and request permission to park on the street overnight, should they have their driveway being redone, or guests from out of town here. We do make exceptions all the time for those reasons, correct.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we already have equipment to boot cars?
No, that's something else that we have to look into.
So, my follow-up question would be, because this is going into effect before the end of the year, but, so, until that's addressed, I'm assuming we'll, we'll be towing?
Correct.
Until we find funding?
Or my hope is everybody follows the law, and we don't have to do anything.
Mine too.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Do we already have a vendor?
We only have one towing company in town, so, yes.
Councilmember French.
We should speak after the meeting about an alternative to boots that I just saw.
Yes, I think I know what you're talking about, too.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council this evening?
I'm just wondering, is the college going to be notified?
They already have been.
About that?
Yeah.
One of their staff members sits on this council.
Okay. Seeing, okay, see, seeing no further discussion, thank you. We will ask for a roll call vote on that.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Item C, discussion, city providing in-kind service for Double Vision. Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. I had asked that if the city could see if they could do some sort of in-kind for Double Vision. When I got my council packet, there is something in there that says, unfortunately, according to the Michigan Municipal League Guide on unlawful expenditures by a government unit, such expenditures cannot be authorized where there is no contract for specific services related to the function of the local unit of government. So, with that being said, I got my MML book out, and I went to chapter twenty-three. Does anybody have one of these?
Not on me, yes.
Not on hand? So, anyways, I went and I looked up a couple of things that are in our, in chapter twenty-three, which is the limits of municipal expenditures. So, as I was looking it through here, I highlighted a couple of things that kind of stood out to me, and I just want to share them with the community, and the mayor, and the city council board. It says that municipalities have the power to expand funds only for a public purpose. Determining a public purpose is whether the expenditure confers a direct benefit of reasonably general character to a significant part of the public. The Michigan Constitution nor state law grants the municipalities the power to spend public money on employee parties, gifts, et cetera. Absent a grant of spending, spending authority, and no clear public purpose defined, the expenditure is most likely illegal. Simply put, a municipality cannot give public funds away. Generally, a public purpose has for its objective the promotion of the public health, safety, morals, general welfare, security, prosperity, and contentment of all the inhabitants or residents within the municipal corporation, the sovereign powers of which were used to promote such public purpose. The right of the public to receive, to receive and enjoy the benefit of the use determines whether the use is public or private. The following questions may be helpful in determining whether an expenditure is appropriate. Number one, is the purpose specifically granted by the Michigan Constitution by, by statute or by court decision? Number two, is the expenditure for a public purpose? Is the municipality contracting for services that the municipality is legally authorized to provide? Is the operation or service under the direct control of the municipality? If you can answer yes to these questions, the expenditure is most likely appropriate. So, my question there, and I'll ask it again after I'm done, if this requires yes to all four, or yes to some? And there is one thing that Double Vision has going for itself. As for number two in, in here, which is, it says, is the expenditure for a purpose public? I said yes. Double Vision talks about eliminating poverty, to also talks about job creation. High-risk families and students are learning cover letter writing, resumes, how to do resumes, interview skills, filling out applications, and this is something, Mayor and council, that I know, because I have taught and helped out with this particular, this particular program. They also providing community service for AVSO, probate court, housing authorities that require the residents to do community service to stay in their homes, and community service for two-eleven participants to get utilities cut back on from shut-off notices. So, with that being said, I kept going, and it says, except as otherwise provided in this constitution, no city or village shall have the power to loan its credits for any private purpose, or except as provided by law for a public purpose. Public purpose, but outside municipal control. If the purpose for which the funds are expended is public in nature, but the operation is not under the control of the city or village which is making the contribution, it may nonetheless still be an illegal expenditure. Expansion of public purpose. Considerable use has been made of the authority to contract with private nonprofit agencies to perform services on behalf of a city or village. In providing for the public peace, health, and safety, a city may expand funds or enter into contracts with a private organization. May I ask a representative from Double Vision to stand?
Uh, yeah.
Is that okay?
That's, that's fine.
Can I get a representative? Right here. You state your name and address?
Lonnie Brewer, Hillside, apartment nine.
Mr. Brewer, have you had conversations with any city official about trying to find a way that you could come together to promote a program to benefit the city of Albion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It says the federal or state government, a county, village, township, or other city for services considered necessary by the municipal body vested with legislative power, public peace, health, and safety services. Double Vision was approached about safety services, and sexual assault services. We had, we currently, Double Vision currently has one sexual assault advocate, and I myself will be an advocate also, starting October the seventh, of the end of this week. It also may include, but shall not be limited to, the operation of child guidance and community mental health clinics. Double Vision was also approached for the use of their building for, by a representative from Summit Point. I won't go into too much detail about that, but they are available if anyone wants to know what the discussion was about. So, Mayor, I just, and council, I just wanted to bring to the attention that I'm, I'm not degrading anyone. It, it has been made aware that we paved a parking lot for a nonprofit. They did not pay us for it, they did not pay our city workers for it, and our city workers did the work. I think it is really unfair to find something in our MML book to not help Double Vision in any kind of way, but we can go and pay taxpayers' dollars and pave a parking lot that does not belong to us. So, I am asking on the behalf of Double Vision, can we revisit this discussion? Can anyone from council, maybe you, the mayor, and the pro, you, the city manager and the pro temp, sit down with them and ask them, is it something that we could collaborate on? Have a discussion with them about it? Because they have been trying to reach out. So, with that being said, we, the rule that says that we cannot do something for a nonprofit, we have done it for a nonprofit. So, with that being said, I just thank you, Mayor, and council.
Thank you. A couple of things, so thank you for reading that. You know, I'd encourage rest of the council, if they have time, to read that, it's a lot of different, good information in there. I, for the, I guess, the technical aspects of, of that, I, I would refer to Cullen. You know, I, from, just from my experience, I know case in point garbage service, that's an example of something that we've done for a public service that the city's not necessarily providing, we've contracted with an entity. To the extent that that, I guess, goes for other, you know, like, for example, if we wanted to contract with someone for, I don't know, recreation services or something, I'm sure we could do something like that, but I'll, I'll let Cullen, Attorney Harkness speak to that.
You're exactly right, Mayor. I mean, we have, we have done certain things like that in the past, I believe, maybe one or two years ago, we contracted with a private organization to provide certain, I think, recreation or after-school services on behalf of the city, which our rec. department could have done, but we did it through this third-party unit with solid waste. That's a, a, a service that can be provided through the city, but instead we contracted with a private agency, which we're authorized by law to do. I think the problem in this particular situation is, is, and Councilwoman Lawler went over several of the factors, we're dealing with a private organization over which the council and the city have no oversight, and, and there's no contract between the private organization and the city to provide a service to the public. And so most of the factors for consideration weigh... um weigh, I think, against um the, 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 the giving of services and money as opposed to the court. Um, there um is at least one attorney general opinion. Um, uh, I believe it was from nineteen thirty-seven, nineteen thirty-eight, uh, where there was a, at one point, there was a public act that was passed, which authorized counties at that time uh to, to give uh monies to charitable institutions uh for, to render services uh to individuals to prevent them from basically becoming public charges, which is, I'd say fairly analogous to, to what we're doing here. I mean, we're dealing with a five oh one C three organization. And in that case, the, the legislation that was passed was found by the attorney general to be unconstitutional and that the, the public funds, which uh was for Star Commonwealth, uh was found to be illegal. So uh my opinion would be, we're talking about giving uh public funds to a private organization. It, it probably would not be legal and, and um uh, i- if it's, if it's happened in the past with the city, I mean, um, I guess my, my thought on that is, if it has happened in the past, certainly um we wouldn't wanna repeat um something that may not be above board. So that's just my legal sense.
So, um, well, okay, Councilmember Brown, then Councilmember Lawler.
Okay, thank you, mayor. I, um, so my question, I don't know if this is for Attorney Harkness, maybe? So um, Councilmember Lawler referenced um parking lot work.
Uh-huh.
And I know the city did some patchwork in a parking lot where there was no labor charged, but our city workers did the work. So my question is, what made that legal or was that legal?
It wasn't, and I advised the administration that it was inappropriate, and it shouldn't happen again. I found out after it happened.
Well, I, I think, well, me too. I may have another question, but I'll, I'll pass right now.
Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, mayor. Um, at this point, um, um, if I may speak um a little softly for Double Vision, um, money is really not what they're asking. They're really asking for someone to help find, um, asking for a collaboration with the city of Albion. Asking someone to si- sit down with them and come up with some type of collaboration that can be grant-funded or through a fundraiser that cre- can create specific services that can be beneficial to Albion, period. So we're asking, they are asking if someone can donate some time?
So.
I mean, we, we did donate some time and um taxpayer dollars to something that didn't even, wasn't even a, a, a city project.
What?
They're just asking for someone to help find some grants or do a fundraiser together. But I don't see a problem with it, mayor.
Councilmember Brown, then I, I have a comment.
Thank you, mayor. So, you know, I, I don't know what exactly the city can do, but I will say, um, as mayor pro temp, I'm willing to, to sit down with Double Vision, with maybe Dr. Mitchell, if she's available, to see what can and can't be done, to see how we can fit in if, if, if at all, yeah. So, let's, can we set that meeting up?
Yeah, 'cause I, I think one of the, one of the things I, I'll say, and I'll be very just kinda frank on, on all sides, so, um, if, if an error was made, we can acknowledge that and, and seek to address that. Um, it doesn't necessarily mean that we do another thing that would be an error because there was another error. Um, I, I get the fact that, um, you know, there's, you know, there's, there's a, a commitment to making sure that Double Vision is up and running and serving and, and, and actually even the current work they're doing, that that's acknowledged. Um, I think the, when it comes to the, the city, unless it's, um, I guess, a function of the city that we're contracting with, um, you know, nonprofit or a for-profit entity to carry out in our place, um, you know, we can't necessarily expend, you know, money or staff time. Now, if, if staff were willing to volunteer to do that on their own time, that's, that's cool. Um, if there was some programming, 'cause, 'cause I would think that, that there, there, there could be some programming that the city, um, I don't know, I don't know what sports you do in a roller rink, but like if, if there was some sport that the recreation didn't, didn't offer, and we said, okay, we're gonna contract with you to facilitate that, something like that probably could work.
Hypothetically, if there's something like that.
Um, but, but beyond, but, but in terms of, um, you know, actually, what you're really saying is kind of a, either a grant consultant or those kinds of things. I think that would not be something that the city could directly provide. Um, so, yeah, so I, I get what you're saying. So, but, 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 my, my, my thing is, in the case of the parking lot, that was clearly wrong and out of bounds, and we have to address that. Um, that doesn't mean that we can't, we should turn around and try to, you know, u- use funds or, um, uh, labor, um, to do something that's not within the, really the kind of the charge of what the city is supposed to do. Um, but, you know, if, if theoretically, what the attorney and I are saying is that there, if there was some, there was some programming that, that would fall under the purview of what the city would usually provide, that we're not providing, that might be an avenue for something like that. Um, so what, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna go to the city manager, then councilmember French, and then councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, um, mayor and council. There is a number of things that were brought up, and I'd like to have an opportunity to respond to each of those. Um, the first of one, the assertion relative to the paving of the parking lot with Albion College. Um, it is correct that as part of the arrangement where they assumed the responsibility of paving Cass Street, which is not their responsibility, and placing lights along Cass Street, which is not their responsibility, they asked if we could assist with providing the asphalt for some of their parking lots. I did approve that. Unfortunately, I did not realize that they were also expecting this to be far more extensive project than I had anticipated. They did pay us for the cost of the materials, they did not pay us for the cost of the labor. As has been stated, that will not happen again. And I would hope that that's been settled, but if you want to continue to talk about it, we can. In regards to Double Vision, first and foremost, I have met with them on a number of occasions and have offered to partner with them on a number of occasions. I've offered to support applications for grants, should they wish to submit one in partnership with the city. So I don't know what else I can do in that regard. If you want to create a policy that says that for all nonprofits in the city of Albion, that the city is going to act as their grant application processor, then I guess that's what you can do, but do I think it's appropriate? Do I think it's the best use of my time? No. And for anyone at any time to indicate that the city, especially me, has not been supportive of Double Vision, I deeply resent that. As recently as a couple of weeks ago, when they asked for the pavilion and to use it for one of their events and asked for the fees to be waived, I paid it out of my own pocket. So to any way indicate that I am not supportive of their efforts would be a misstatement. I truly believe that they have good intentions. What is the role relative to the city and relative to my administration in supporting them? I think we have to be very cautious in terms of the use of public tax dollars relative to supporting another entity, no matter how good their intentions may be. Is it appropriate? So, I remain willing to support their initiatives wherever I can. I don't have enough time to find my own grants, let alone trying to find them for someone else. And I don't think anybody understands the amount of effort and time that goes into not only a grant application, but also in terms of the administration of the grant, who's gonna assume the responsibilities? If you're just looking for resources, the library he- all libraries have a number of resources relative to where you can find grants. You could go to grants.gov. So there are opportunities, but do I feel that is my role as city manager? I would say it's not. I'm willing to partner with anybody who wants to partner with the ci- city. I make myself available, I make my staff available. We offer ideas, we offer ideas relative to programs and projects, uh referrals for different grants as they become available. I've referred them to the uh, the Albion Community Foundation relative to their grants when those um applications are being accepted. I've offered to partners issue letters of support whenever they have those initiatives. So I don't know what else is expected of me and this administration relative to supporting a nonprofit organization in our community. If you recall, less than a year ago, I was reprimanded then before, because I reached an agreement with them to try to be fair relative to the settlement of their water bill. So I think it's disingenuous to in any way imply that I am not supportive of this organization and the individuals involved.
Thank you. Councilmember French, Lawler, and then the attorney.
Thank you. Um, so in, in, in listening to what Councilwoman Lawler says about the general good and, and, our support of things, um, the city is, does not have social services as part of its call. We provide physical services in terms of water and sewer and protection, fire, uh, public safety, roads. But we have a recreation department that provides opportunities for our youth. But we don't have opportunities for, for things that Double Vision does. That's not, we've not been charged as a city to deliver those, those services. There are other entities in town that do deliver those services. Um, and I would think if we were going to arrange with a, uh, an entity to help provide our community with those services, like any contract, we would have to have an RFP, like any other contract, we'd have to get multiple bids. Um, we'd have to make sure that those organizations that would deliver those services are properly certified and trained at the state level um so that we know that, that the services being delivered are appropriate and above board and all that. Um, and so that seems to me like a tremendous leap for us to be engaged in moving forward. Now, I agree that what Double Vision does provide for its, its people who are, use their services is valuable, um, but this just opens up a whole new level of administration that our city, I don't think, can afford.
Councilmember Lawler and Attorney.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I just wanna um say a couple of things. Um, Double Vision is not saying that you yourself, um, Dr. Mitchell, do not support. What Double Vision is saying is the whole body. Yes, we got a couple people that, that does support it. What is being laid on the table is asking for a collaboration, like the Fire Keepers grant. Can we not collaborate on something where it will be beneficial to try and get this grant? Um, I know that is a, a major grant that is out there. Yes, the city manager has uh supported some things that Double Vision does. Yes, she has, but we're talking about a body, a whole body, the whole body. Um, Double Vision is aware of who supports them and who does not. They are aware that they are looked at as, nobody wants to, somebody that doesn't want to um go out and collaborate with other entities. I've just presented other entities that would want to partnership with Double Vision. So I can kinda kill that vibe right there. Um, but we are asking as a, a, Double Vision is asking as a whole, us as a whole, to come up with something that we can provide services for the city of Albion. Because in this book, it says, we can contract together. And like I said, it could be with a grant, it could be with a fundraiser. I've seen us do fundraisers, you know, and support other people's fundraisers and things like that. But what I'm saying is, like the Fire Keepers, something like that, where we can collaborate with the city to receive or hopefully receive a grant like that. So I would never say that you don't support it. I'm speaking as a whole. I am speaking as a whole.
I, I have two, well, go ahead, and I, I have two questions.
So, let me start with saying I know virtually nothing about Double Vision and its mission other than the fact that it is a, that it is a five oh one C three organization. And, and having listened to everything tonight, and certainly with all due respect to, to Councilman Lawler, um, you know, it may be if there was a more specific venture being put forth, like contract with Double Vision to provide this specific service for this specific period of time, we wanna pursue a grant for that. But I'm gonna give you, as a council, a legal opinion as your legal advisor. What I'm based upon, the attorney general opinion, the case law that I've read, what we're talking about tonight, is giving public money or, or in the form of labors, which is subsidized by public money, to a private organization outside of our control. I don't think that that's permissible. I think you're exposing yourself to liability if you were to do something like that. I, I'm not trying to uh cast any aspersions at the organization itself, themselves. I'm sure that they're a great organization with a great uh mission. But I'm just telling you, this is my legal opinion to you, to Cullen.
So, two, so take us a, a comment and a question. So one, I, I will say, just for clarifying, I think about the Fire Keepers grant, that was for, in, in that case, that was for a, a city park. So that was something that, you know, we, we did have, you know, basically full control responsibility for so that, that, you know, there was a kind of um, a logic to that. The question I have is, and this is just from my kinda curious, like, so when, when, when the Festival of the Forks happens and the city provides support services for that, like where, what, where does that fall?
There are certain, I'm sorry, there are certain exceptions um under the public expenditures that the, there's attorney general's opinion in the case on for uh cultural, artistic events, things like that. Centennials, things of that nature, there are specific exemptions for that.
So if they, I, I'm not suggesting, I'm just, I'm asking hypothet- hypothet- hypothetical question. So if something, if I guess any nonprofit in town or organization through some kind of arts-cultural festival or something, and they said, hey, could you put out the benches, put some things out, and then cosponsor it? We, we could, I, I'm, I'm curious about what, what the, what the.
Well, I would say, I would say the answer to your question is gonna be yes and no. I would say, to the extent that you're making public accommodations for a cultural, artistic event, yes, to the extent that you're saying cosponsor, I guess it would be no.
Okay.
That, that uh cultural, artistic event thing, it only goes so far.
Okay, okay.
Like providing police service for Festival of the Forks, totally fine. Paying for, you know, say, like, uh, for, for the tents for people set up or for their, um, you know, liquor licenses for those that were serving alcohol. Not.
Councilmember Lawler, city manager Mitchell, who was here?
Thank you, mayor. When writing the grant, which I wrote twice, for Fire Keepers, it required a nonprofit to collaborate with the city. Might not have my words right, but I know these two do something together. Might not have my words right, but I know these two do something together to try to make it work. So, you don't even have to give up money. You collaborate on a project. It says right here, you can do it. We can do some fundraisers together to try to do whatever we need to do to provide services for Albion. So my only request was to sit down with them and ask them, you know, whatever, if, if something they can do that the city has a need for. See if, if it, if it is something that they may be able to provide. But I know for Fire Keepers, that a nonprofit in the city has to be on the same accord as one. So I know that is one thing that can be done.
And, and, you know, what I'll offer is that we can sit down and meet. I know the manager, you know, has been very direct about, you know, her efforts, and so, you know, I, I, I believe that. So, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, if we, if further discussion could find a way to move forward, I'm, I'm willing to do that. So I'm going to let the manager comment, and then if you're okay, we can, we can move forward. But, but thank you for bringing it to our attention, because I think that's one of the things that, you know, each of us on the council are, you know, elected to bring things here and discuss them. And they're not always, you know, pretty and convenient, but I, I think that that's something that, I, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. So, Dr. Mitchell, and then we'll move forward.
Okay. And I just want to restate, I have said to the owners of Double Vision in the past, as recently as when the last round of grant applications were available for Fire Keepers, when it became known to me that as a municipality, we could put in more than one grant application. And I mentioned to them then that I would be willing to partner with them relative to even that grant application. I could not draft it for them, but I was willing to partner with them, and I remain willing to partner with them in these initiatives. And I just want to remind council, in the past, some of you may not have been serving at that time, relative to the Festival of the Forks, and they had asked for the $500 donation as a sponsor towards the event. And it was determined by our, our legal counsel that that is not what we can do. So instead, we contracted for services, and that's how we were able to do that. So we have to stay within the realm of legalities relative to our operations as a municipality. But I just want to again reaffirm that I am willing to partner with any organization in our community that wants to move Albion forward.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Lawler. We'll, we'll move on to item D, is a request approval for a tentative agreement with the Albion Command Officers Association, which is one of the city's unions in public safety. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded.
Briefly, this is relative to the Albion Command Officers Association, formerly known as the P O L C, and now they're the A P O A M, or there's a lot of letters in there. And their proposal is for a three-year contract with the 2% increase each year. They are asking for a slight increase in the tuition reimbursement, and they are doing the conversion from regular vacation and sick time to the PTO or paid time off time.
I, I have two questions. One, one regarding what you just said. So with the tuition reimbursement, is that, would that be for young, like for new hires? Or is that for just anyone who's going back to just get further education?
This is for the command officers, so they would have to have been within the,
Okay, you're right.
the employ of the public safety for at least three years, so they would not be new hires.
Okay. And then the second question is, and this is just a general, it's an ongoing question about the code enforcement deputizing. Like if, if that were, if council were to go that way, would approving the, the contracts be kind of prohibitive regarding that?
Could you restate that?
So, so if we, if the council, after, you know, after some examination, research says, you know, says that, you know, we want to go forward with, you know, having public safety involved with code enforcement, is there anything in the contract that would have to be opened up or renegotiated?
I would imagine that it would.
Okay, okay. So, so basically, in approving the contract, we're, we're kind of putting a hurdle when it comes to that? If, if that was, if there was an option that we decide to go with?
Well, it would take some type of reorganization regardless in order to accomplish that. So at some point, if that's the direction that it was determined to go, we would have to negotiate that in terms of the job descriptions with those impacted.
Okay. Do you have any? Oh, okay. Okay, that, those are, that was just my, my two questions. Are there any questions from council this evening? Okay, seeing none. We will proceed with a roll call vote.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Item E, request approval tentative agreement for the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees. Ask Me, A F L C I O, is there, is there?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any major differences?
Nothing significantly. This again is a three-year agreement with Ask Me, which covers Department of Public Services, so that's Water, Waste, Water, and DPW. They also agreed to the 3% each increase for each year. We did receive an addendum today. They are asking that the end date not be September 30th, 2020, but actually extend to December 31st of 2020, which is not a problem at all. We did make some, some modifications relative to the residential requirement, format on call compensation, and license incentives, along with agreeing to the proration of the health savings account contributions. Currently, those are made 100% in January and would be prorated based on the quarter in which a new hire would, would be brought on board.
Okay. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Okay, so the next one that's going to be?
It's already been removed from the agenda.
Well, there was a vote.
We did that before then, when you went to executive session.
Was it five votes?
It was unanimous. Yes.
But you mean five votes to do it?
It was five votes.
Take it off the ballot.
The current, the current city rules actually say four.
But there were five, because Jeanette.
There were five here, and Jeanette was here.
Ah, okay. Well, then we're good. Item G, discussion update on Dal Rumpel property. Do you want to start?
That was the request of Councilmember Brown relative to this data. As you know, the Kelvin County Treasurer's Office and in partnership with the Kelvin County Land Bank didn't proceed with the demolition of this school. And once the property has been remediated, the intention is that it will be deeded over to the city to determine how they may wish to move forward with redevelopment. So that's still in the process, and we are waiting for those documents to be forwarded to us.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to say that the concern I had about the porta potty, I noticed a couple of days later it was gone, so let Chris know. Thank you.
Okay, so any further discussion on that? Okay. Move forward. Item H, Councilmember French mentioned this at the last meeting, suggested that for budget dates to get on top of that before it creeps up on us. So do we want to, I know in the past, we've had the manager and administrations put together.
They have?
Yes. Possible dates, and so.
It says the summary.
On, if you, if.
And I think there's a, also a sheet that outlines it within your packet. Essentially, we're looking at Monday, so Monday, October 23rd for the general fund, October 30th for public services, November 13th for some of the component units such as EDC. November 27th is on reserve in case we need additional time for discussion. December 4th being the public hearing on the budget for 2018, and then December 18th, the adoption of the 2018 budget.
So these are basically all, it's, it's on the, yeah. And these are all basically just off Mondays, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Fourth and the 18th may not.
No, those aren't, but the other ones are.
Okay. And this is standard practice, what we usually do, because I think there's like a 10, a 10-day posting publication thing? Okay. Yeah, so, you know, the, we're still at the beginning of the month, but, you know, the dates look all right for me. They're just basically just off Mondays, and I think the last two are just the, the two regular meetings in December. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. And am I to assume these are 7:00 PM meetings?
Yes.
That's up to you, but that's our assumption.
Is there any other further question on that? Okay. And if, you know, if something changes, let, let us know, and then we can see what, if we, if the changes do need to be made, so. We'll move on to item I. This is actually discussion, council rules and procedures, Councilmember French.
I think we removed that from our agenda as well.
Oh, okay.
We've changed it to discussion.
Oh, that's right, we did. So I, I can give an update.
Okay, Councilmember French.
After a meeting with Mayor Brown and, and Councilwoman Brown, which was the forming of a subcommittee that our mayor had asked us to do to look at council rules and make changes to them, I have drafted, which I have now sent to our city attorney, our city manager, our city clerk, as well as Mayor Brown and Councilwoman Brown, a draft of the marriage of our city council rules with some city council rules we found from the city of court hereon and from recommendations from the MML. That is now in the hands of those folks. We've asked the city attorney to help us with some correlation to known city charter numbers and things like that. Asking Councilwoman Brown and Mayor Brown for their input to make sure that I have made the appropriate changes as we talked about at a meeting a while back. And that I hope that action could be done on this at the October 16th meeting. Is that our next council meeting? Yeah, October 16th meeting, when we'd be able to approve, have discussion and resolution so that we could have it done at that time.
Thank you.
And I've also asked that, once our city mayor and Councilwoman Brown have looked at that, that they will then instruct our city manager and staff, city clerk, to send that to the rest of council for their purview and plenty of time for them to review it in time for approval on the 16th.
And I just want to commend Councilmember French for, for taking, for taking the initiative and putting in the time to, to do the typing during the meetings and to do the harmonizing, so that that's greatly appreciated, so.
You're most welcome.
So we are going to move forward to item J, request approval for a board and commission appointment, to actually, actually complete a partial appointment here. Scott Evans, who is the CEO of Homestead Savings Bank to the Albion Economic Development Corporation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I should say he, he's replacing Ray Campbell, who is on and retired. And probably maybe next meeting or next month, we can kind of have a, some certificates of appreciation for Ray, for Art Gale, for Scott Brown, a number of people who have served the city for some time, so. Seeing no discussion, I ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There's still a lot going on in Albion, so we're really excited about the participation we had in the Clean the Kazoo this past weekend. There were a number of participants and supporters and sponsors. And I just want to mention, Public Safety was there with their grill monster machine, and the chief was making pancakes, and we all benefited greatly from the culinary skills of Councilmember Lynn Reed again. And, but we also had donations from McDonald's and Big B Coffee and Family Fair, Enbridge Foundation, which helped to support the undertaking. Ran Ranger provided the receptacles for some of the materials, and White House Nature Center, Albion College, and the Kayak Club. So again, thank you. We'll be asking them to come to a future council meeting to actually present them with a certificate participation, and it was a lot of fun. It was a little cool early in the morning before the sun rose up. But we also want to thank our very able Vista members, Lauren, Lauren and Andrew. They were there as well, supporting us, and it was a fun day. So thank you again, everyone, for participating and making that a great event that benefited everyone who wants to enjoy the river. And I've only heard of one person who got poison ivy. And you have before you a couple of reports from our departments. The finance department, as you can imagine, is quite busy this time of year, and they are getting geared up for the 2018 budget. The recreation department, they have a number of things going on, and the open walking is still available, including from Monday through Saturday from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. The Albion Community Center, the Playwright Basketball Academy is continuing on Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursday evenings from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and we encourage youth to participate in these programs. Adult open gym basketball continues as well. And there's a number of opportunities to have fun at the Albion Recreation Center. So we encourage people to participate. If you're looking for things, especially in the fall. And they are always looking for volunteer coaches as well, so if you have any interest in that, we encourage you to reach out to the director, Perry Williams, to offer your time and services to support those initiatives. And I want to remind everyone that on Saturday, the Albion branch of the NAACP will having, will be having their Freedom Month dinner. And the keynote speaker will be Kim Trent, who is very active in the, I guess I would call it the southeast Michigan area, and she's also on some certain TV programs. So she's, I'm sure it's going to be a very hot conversation that she's going to have with the community because there's a lot going on. And also, I just want to mention briefly, I've just completed my three years here at the city of Albion. It's been an awesome experience, and I did include in your packet the year in review relative to some of the highlights of what we've been working on. I can't take credit because we, we work as a team and we have some amazing people for our department heads and employees, and I want to thank them for making all of our successes possible.
Thank you. Future agenda items. Councilmember Brown?
Discussion and approval of the council rules.
Okay. Any other future agenda items? I, I do have, oh, Councilmember Brown?
I'm sorry, the center, city manager evaluation.
Yes. So I talked with the city manager earlier. She suggested Wednesday?
This week?
Of this week?
What?
To do, to do the evaluation.
Thursday or Friday would work as well.
With, with Thursday, with Thursday work better? Councilmember Lawler, with Thursday work, seven? Councilmember French?
Hang on.
Okay. Would that work? Councilmember Brown?
It would cause for me to sacrifice something else. Which I always have to do.
Which I always have to do.
Should it...
Can we do 6?
6:30?
30.
Okay, 6:30 Thursday?
30.
Is that, because, yeah.
It helps me out.
Oh, it does, okay, okay.
Yes.
And does Thursday work for...
Me too.
Okay, so Thursday, 6:30, special meeting with closed session for executive, for the evaluations. And then there's, I should say, there's a... There's a performance tomorrow at the bone?
Yes.
And is that just, is that just a performance, or is there some kind of...
That's tomorrow.
It's a part of the Big Reed, and Warren Treaty will be performing.
Okay, so that's tomorrow. One other question, I don't know if it's future agenda items, or if I know if it's, I don't know if it's our responsibility, but when the street is completed, I know last time there was, and maybe probably Mr. Passick could speak to this, but there was some, were there any kind of like opening?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's it right now. We will move on to motion to excuse absent council members. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes for proper protocol and decorum, and we ask that you state your name and address. Public comments.
My name is Lonnie Brewer, Hillside Road, Apartment 9. Just for the record, I've been serving my department for 10 years as president. With saying that, it took us a long time to get our nonprofit status to where we had to get certified through the state. I'm not only certified to the state, I'm also certified through federal government too as well. Now, I've been working with at-risk kids for 30 years. Andy French, you don't know anything about at-risk kids. If you did, you would recognize that my years of putting in here for 30 years, if you did your research instead of going by, the building's not open, you would have seen that I had that qualification and a certification. Every, I served three boards, three boards, and I shared this with you. I served 13 years on my job as president. I served 10 years on my job as president, my own personal nonprofit. I did that, and I also served on the mason board for three years as vice, so I have all the qualification to deal with what I do. So don't take what I do so lightly because my building's not up. The problem is not my qualification, it's I just reached out to a building that was overwhelmed. You should know that Bomb Theater took three years to open up with the support of you. The rest of the other organization business that opened up, like the Ice Man House, is supported by the community. So does that mean they sorry too, or what's the problem with that too? They got support. Well, only thing we was doing is asking for the same support that you gave the Bomb Theater, that y'all gave Ice Man House, that y'all gave every other organization that's a nonprofit. That's the only thing, we came here to ask for that same respect and support. But it's a some reason, it's feel like we's a handout organization. Now, I'm a charitable organization. I went through the state to get that charitable, to be able to do something for the city of Albion. I just want to say this too, I got a lot more support from Battle Creek. Battle Creek wanted us to get out of this city because y'all fake like that, because they said that Albion don't like to share the wealth, they don't like to, they like to continue to share in that circle, and that's what we was told by people that hire a position you are. Now, we was told to get a lawyer to sue y'all because y'all not fair about how y'all represent y'all client, but I didn't do that. McCola handled all our paperwork. She handled all bookkeeping, McCola handled all grant writing, so majority of our paperwork come through her. So when you say stupid stuff, what you just said, you need to talk to McCola, Lala. Now, further than the lawyer right here to saying his word is so, his purpose so guaranteed, you let, you let all this money go by, but if you was so smart, you would have caught that, because that's incompetent to me. So if you keep your little smart, come into yourself as well. Thank you.
Man, whoa.
Okay.
I'm out of here.
Mr. Passick, get your hand up.
Donnie Brewer, 919 North Clinton Street. I'm not here to diss anybody, but like I said, me and my brother been doing it for a lot of years, and we've been having a lot of organizations, as well as, I'm gonna put it, keep it real, and people that's sitting right here done told other organization don't support us. And if you want to know, I can tell you, but if you want to know. But this is what been told. Every time we go out to get money, other organization, people get threatened by helping us. So this is what's going on in the city. So did we say anything? No, we didn't. If you want proof, we can give you proof. But I can go right to the source and come back, but we been trying to be so nice and still want to work the city of Albion. But like I said, we can go anywhere with our license. Like I said, I'm fostered. I have foster license, we have daycare provider license, we have nursing license right here, we have sexual assault right here, this woman right here. We do all of this. We're not a welfare, as you may look at it, organization. We do this because we love what we do, and we have all this thing that's, we have for to give to this city, but this city don't want to give us nothing. So with that said, you know...
You want to say something, y'all?
We done, and we want y'all to have a good day.
Frank Passick, 900 South Eaton Street. I will speak loud enough so the people on television can hear. Tonight, I have two topics real quick to talk about. First of all, I'd like to invite everybody to come to my presentation on Tuesday, the 10th of October, at Sterling Books and Brew, right behind here, and 119 North Superior Street. I'll be giving a talk called Albion Numismatics, Part 1. I'm a certified judge for the American Numismatic Association, I'm a contributor to the catalog of world coins, et cetera, but this year, we've had an unusual circumstance. For the first time since 1903, Superior Street's been opened up to metal detectors, and we have uncovered some pioneer history of Albion. The metal, two metal detectors, which have been here working after hours, after the workers go home, have found some things, and we've catalogued them and got them in order, and Albion's pioneer history. And I'm not talking about just coins, I'm talking about things like kerosene lantern pieces, Prussian military buttons from the Prussian over in Germany, where a lot of our settlers came from the 1850s, Civil War tokens, two of them, two of the Civil War tokens from Albion, they were used as change because everybody was hoarding money. We're gonna have these items on display, also leather strappings from the leather shop here, some charred remains, some old pottery. So it's like an archaeological dig of Superior Street's been going on this summer, and I'll be featuring those with the two metal detectors, I'll have them on display, and I'd like you to come with us, it'd be a great evening, and also, part of my presentation, I will be giving, beginning to start things out, a presentation about 19th century metals of Albion College, some beautiful metals they came out with, and also Albion's Civil War tokens. Some merchants came out with tokens that were used as change because the coins were non, were extinct then because people were hoarding them, so the merchants had to come out with their own change, and during 1863, they did, and this was across the country. And by the way, some of the metal detectors found some of those here, also from some other towns here under there, but I'll be giving a presentation to them, and then we'll move on to the metal detector stuff and the things they found. So come on and have an enjoyable evening, you'll be amazed, and being a historian, and this is right in line with what happened in Albion's history, some of the things we found is proof and is items, so there's some unusual about our Superior Street brick project that maybe you haven't thought about. So come on to that. The other thing I'd like to talk about tonight real quick is, as you know, M99 has been using South Eaton Street as a detour route, and that goes right up my house, it's been fine, we're used to the trucks, there's no problem about that. But the cement concrete base that was laid on South Eaton Street was laid in the 1930s as part of a WPA project, Works Progress Administration, and our 1940 brick, concrete base was laid, of course, 1940 is part of a WPA project about four years later. Because of the heavy traffic, I've been watching this, between 800 and 900 block of South Eaton Street especially, I live on Mechanic Street, they're at 900, it's been sinking on the east side of the street. They laid two big concrete slabs meeting in the middle, one east, one west, and those trucks go by, go down, 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 and then there's holes, just like we have in Superior Street. So between 800 and 900 blocks, and the problem there is, it's that's where the old black ditch went through, and it's mucky there, and of course, I don't think it's the best base, but those trucks have really sunk that east side, and you take, you can see the line right down the middle. Since this is a state highway this year, and since the county road commission came and repaired Urban Avenue for those two blocks, and anything else they thought needed repair, now's our chance to at least get some funding to repair the damage they're making, and on South Eaton Street, and who knows, you know, of course, that Eaton Oaks, they got that big hump, or that big dip there where that sewer grate is, and they put some tar over it a little bit, but it's bad there, you need to talk about that, so I'm over with, but I want the council to be aware of that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember French?
Just real quick, what day is this event? You mentioned right at the beginning.
Tuesday, October 10th.
At what time?
7 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more further... Oh, okay.
I have to, oh, I have to, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna tie myself, I'm gonna stick to three minutes. Okay, so Evan Ziegelman, and I'm a freshman at the college, so observation and then two questions. So one thing that I noticed is, as you can also notice, is we lost about half the audience during this whole discussion on the double vision thing, and I just kind of have, not with double vision at all, or the, having a discussion about it, but just the fact that it went on for about half an hour. So this now leads to the question of the new rules and procedures for the meetings, is there provisions there that limit discussion time to a certain timeframe, and then motions to extend that?
The only limitation, there are limits on public comment, three minutes, there are limits to council member comments during a session for 10 minutes, and then limits in terms of the number of times council members can speak, if the other colleagues have not, but really, there's no limit to discussion, I mean, because theoretically...
And we have gone along.
Yeah, now, yeah, there are, there are ways, there are parliamentary ways to force the end of discussion, but even then, you know, you need five votes to stop an ongoing discussion, so I think that's ultimately, in a way, my responsibility to kind of keep the conversation on track, but really, there's no way to, there really isn't a rule in terms of limiting council discussions.
And my other question, or other comment, I guess, is with the new ordinance that was just, I guess, just passed about towing, towing cars, especially around the college area, is the problem is, is that the students have, are allowed to bring all their cars on campus, so the lots are totally overfilled, and there's no, there's, the parking spaces are extremely competitive, there's very limited parking on campus, so it's very hard to park, so we're gonna have a huge issue coming up, like shortly, if this is followed through and several, and a lot of students start getting more infractions because they have to park on the street because either the parking spot doesn't exist, there's not a way to like kind of make your own spot, or like designate a spot on the street.
What I would suggest is maybe a discussion with, I don't know if you're on the Student Senate?
I'm not at all.
Okay.
I'm on Ford Institute.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe there's some way to, you know, have a, I guess, a meeting with campus safety, administration, student government to address that, but Councilmember French?
Thank you. I know we're not supposed to respond to...
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
...conversations, but I will just say that our Director of Public Safety and myself and a couple of other staff members are already on a parking committee to try to address the needs of students and their parking needs. Thank you so much.
Oh, sir, sir, can you, can you state your name again?
Evan Ziegelman.
Okay.
And if you have to park on the street, call the police department and let them know.
Yeah. Parker.
Hi, I'm, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Sarah Britton, I'm also from Albion College, I'm a sophomore, and I just had further questions about the new parking regulations that are, were just put in place. When exactly are these going to be implemented, and is there going to be sort of a warning time for people who may have already acquired multiple parking tickets and do not have a lot of options?
So my suggestion, because I was just admonished by the mayor for ten, is if you have a moment, I think the Director of Public Safety's still here, I think, I believe so, hopefully. Yes, we can, we can get an answer after the meeting, because I don't want to dispense with answers really for just comments, but I'm not dismissing what you're saying. No, 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 it's, I appreciate you coming and speaking, and we'll, after the meeting, have that, questions from the Public Safety Director. Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Brown, your excuse.
I have to take Marco with her.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Patrick Miller, 1803 East Michigan. I'm on behalf of ASME Union, just wanted to thank the city manager for a good negotiation, and thank the council and yourself for approving the contract.
Thank you. Mr. Bearman, and then our county commissioner.
I'll keep it quite quick for you, sir. Just wanted to make one quick comment, and that's on how nice the trail is looking. Absolutely done a great job on the bicycle trail.
Address.
Mike Bearman, 11016 29 Mile Road. The next thing we need to do is start putting some of our roads on diets and getting bicycle lanes next to them so we can become a bicycle-friendly community.
Thank you. Commissioner Gary Tompkins.
Good evening, folks. Mr. Mayor, council members, City Manager Mitchell, residents of the city of Albion, good evening. Gary Tompkins, your county commissioner. It's great to be with you folks this evening. It's absolutely wonderful. Just a couple of things I want to update you with, specifically regarding the COPS grant, that I know that you had applied for, and I've been, as a matter of fact, recently, as recent as today, I've been in contact with Billy Kirkland, who is the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs, in conjunction with the Department of Justice, who is the governmental body overseeing the program to check on the status certainly of the program, of the grant, and let them know why Albion is certainly deserving of this grant. As we move forward, I'll be updating you with this as I get more information, and what it was important about going to that trip in DC as I did in August was developing those contacts and really pushing certainly whatever we can do to assist Albion in terms of getting the things that they need, so just, I'll keep you updated as we move forward. Second thing is amnesty days. 10th District Court on October 5th and 6th, which is this Thursday and Friday, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, individuals who owe money on Cowan County Civil Infraction Tickets and have incurred late fees, penalty fees, warrant fees, reinstatement fees, will have the opportunity to have all of those fees waived if they pay the original amount of the ticket. During amnesty days, if you pay the original amount of the ticket, as I stated, the court will waive all of those additional fees, and your case will be closed. This includes reinstatement fees, which would allow you to have a driver's, have your driver's license reinstated. To receive the waiver of fees in amnesty days, you must be in line at the 10th District Court Clerk's office between 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM on the days such as I stated. The Cowan County 10th District Court is located inside the Justice Center in Battle Creek. The court recommends calling ahead on these two dates to inquire whether you are eligible for the waiver of the fees and the amount in which you will owe on October 5th and 6th, and you can certainly call 269-969-6692 for that verification. About a month ago, you had a young lady stand up here and indicate, had a discussion about the amount of houses that were being demoed, certainly in the city of Albion, in terms of how they can be best utilized, either be doors, windows, and whatnot, so after that meeting, that really struck me as an opportunity, so I went back to our land bank authority and started asking some questions, to which I was told, due to asbestos, and et cetera, et cetera, that that was not certainly in the best interest. Well, I'm not one to take that answer, I don't think that's, I mean, even though it's an answer, I would have assumed that would have, we would have had, I don't accept that as an answer, I think we need to go further on that to really give the opportunity. I understand there are some communities in the state of Michigan that are allowing this program, this type of thing to happen, so one of the things I'm gonna really task us and really challenge myself going forward is to really hopefully be able to do that, because she brought up some really good comments, why can we not use those items via doors, windows, et cetera? I understand the asbestos situation certainly, but we've got to find a way for our people opportunity, may not have the resources of buying a new door, why not utilize what we're existing having, so I'll keep you up to date as I move forward on that, but I just wanted to share that with you.
Excellent.
And then, real quickly, September 25th, I had the honor to have lunch with 12 students from Albion College's Gerald R. Ford Institute's leader for public policy and service, as part of the institute's initiative to meet with community leaders about the impact that they have in the community and assist to prepare as a dialogue. And I found it very interesting in terms of just some of the thoughts that they certainly had about government in general, and some of the questions, some of the things that they're interested in, all the different aspects that they had. in, all the different aspects that they had. And I, I wanted to share some of the suggestions for the City of Albion that they had, just as some, some interesting things. Uh, restaurant downtown with outdoor seating. I think most of us would, that would be a cool option certainly in downtown. Uh, more riverfront utilization. That was an interesting one as we have, City of Albion certainly has a lot of riverfront opportunities. So, uh, indoor art fair, utilization of empty storefronts with artwork. And I think you guys have said that before. So it's just a continuation. A live theater and arts as it relates to, we have the Bone Theater certainly, but they're looking for that live theater plays and productions. And then this is the interesting one I had to share with you. Casino. How'd you like that? Casino in the City of Albion, I guess, right? I mean, just found that what interesting is, is a point of which the student stated. So just found that interesting as such. So you never know. But it was a great time. I will take it. It's always a great time to go talk with, uh, with our young students. And then finally, my monthly newsletter was just released. I know most of you folks have received it. And if you're certainly not on the email list, certainly you make it, uh, drop me an email, uh, at the bottom of the newsletter. It's also available at the Albion District Library, hard copy form. So you can also pick it up there. And it's a great resource to know what's going on in and around the seventh district. That being said, anybody have anything for me?
Thank you for following up on that. Cause they, the, I think she lives on, uh, West Erie.
Yeah, exactly. And she had such good comments. She really did. I mean, she really struck me with that, with what she said. And I think it's worthy of us to not just take no for an answer, but let's figure out how we can do it.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. You guys have a great evening, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further public, oh, okay, go ahead.
Dennis Tomlin, three thirteen Irwin Avenue. Uh, I haven't heard any discussion. I'm not sure what you guys have planned, but we've had a couple of meetings about medical marijuana, uh, facilities in the City of Albion. I think at the last meeting, there was about thirty people. They circulated some surveys, felt like there was mixed opinions. So I took it upon myself to circulate approximately sixty more. I got them all right here if you guys are interested. They're anonymous, just any stakeholders in the city. And what I've found is approximately seventy-seven percent of the sixty people I surveyed were in support of all five facilities operating within the city limits. And with them having no, they have no preference on where they operate. They feel they should be allowed wherever the people want them. I know, um, I say Mrs. Mitchell, uh, she suggested that you guys address this vote soon, since the deadline is December fifteenth, when businesses can start locating or operating. I hope you guys can use this information. I can provide you with copies of anything I have if you're interested. On another thing, I talked to, I got some petitions from Ms. Domingo there, or Mrs. Domingo, and we have them filled out and we're looking to start circulating them, uh, Thursdays when we're gonna start collecting signatures. Anybody interested in helping? Maybe some college students, maybe then get some extra credit. But we are meeting at Big B at six PM on Wednesday. So anybody interested in helping circulate those petitions, certainly come and pay us a visit.
I'm, I'm assuming this is for the single hauler?
Oh, sorry, yes. One is a referendum for the single hauler as well as, uh, subsequent laws passed to accommodate that. And then the other is an initiative to remove the mandated trash service so long as individuals lawfully remove, lawfully and adequately remove any trash from their premises. I know we've had a discussion about this, you and I, and, uh, I feel that the single hauler is a good, good thing, but you shouldn't be forced to use it. Now, during all of this, it came to my attention that there was a letter sent to a retired city worker. Uh, he was voicing concerns to individuals or to workers and I guess somehow this could potentially put their jobs in jeopardy. I was wondering if Mrs. Mitchell could elaborate on how voicing our concerns to the employees could jeopardize their jobs. I think inadvertently jeopardize their jobs is the language you use. Uh, and then parking, the, my understanding was the two to six P, or AM parking laws were to accommodate street sweepers. I could be wrong. Now, I believe Daniel Farmer, which I believe he was cut off a couple of weeks ago when he was talking, but, uh, this, street sweepers aren't in operation. They're broken down. They're not working. They're not being used. So why are we concerned about ticketing individuals when it serves no purpose to keep them off the street? I understand during the winter when we have snow removal, but throughout the rest of the year, college students, when they need a place to park, there's no reason to start punishing them. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comment, public comment, I'll ask for motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.